This is, uh, start our special city council meeting of October thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Current time is six thirty. Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and have, for me, do the pledge. You please stand.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for me. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beaver?
Here.
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Woolsey?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Venable?
Here.
Mayor Thorpe?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any public comment this morning?
We do, and we'll start with Sherilyn Long, followed by Hanson Wong.
Good morning. Has the council not learned from their mistakes in the past by the underhanded way the former city manager, Chris Mann, was hired while Justin Beaver was mayor? We were promised transparency and that the community would be able to vet and provide input into who would be managing our city. Instead, it is quite obvious that the exact opposite is happening in this closed session meeting being conducted at six thirty a.m. and moved to a location other than the city hall. These actions do not demonstrate the desire to reestablish trust that has been broken, but rather continue to fuel the fire of contention and discord. In an attempt to appear to avoid more conflicts of interest, we've heard a job recruiter to find a new city manager was hired for twenty-five thousand dollars. Yet this job recruiter was an acquaintance of both Bob Miller and Jennifer Crawford. It seems that this job recruiter was hired merely as a token, for appearances sake only, since city members already knew who they were going to hire for the city manager position. Was this another rigged application process? Merely going through the motions and choosing a manager who will serve you rather than serve the best interests of the residents? Our patience has worn thin with empty tirades and broken promises. Bob, you were appointed by this council against the wishes of the majority of those in District One. Now that very same council has unanimously asked for your resignation. The council's choice, rather than the people's choice, has led to you, Kappa, being in the surrounding newspapers, not in a positive light, but in the most negative way. We have attended numerous city council meetings and made countless public comments, only to have you, who are elected to represent us, vote completely opposite to us, your constituents. We have watched and waited for council to do the right thing, and we are still waiting. We question the ability of this council to make such an important decision as choosing our next city manager if you cannot maintain the basic integrity of this council and restore our public trust. Bob, I believe you have hired one of the top attorneys who specializes in these conflict of interest cases. Are we, the taxpayers, now paying for your legal fees? Why don't you resign and trust the process and your attorney to clear your name? Why don't you, as a former chief of police, insist that the district attorney and even the attorney general investigate to clear your name? You have done your public service and retired, so why are you still here? District One did not vote for you and did not want you as our council member. So please do everyone a favor, including yourself, and resign. The fact that you don't resign and hired a top attorney casts many suspicions on your true motives. John, as our mayor and law enforcement officer, simply referring to outside counsel does not exempt you from your lawful responsibility and duty. Justin, as a law enforcement officer now involved in your department's internal affairs, referring to outside counsel, does not exempt you either from your lawful duty and responsibility. Judy and Chris, you may or may not have heard that the mayor of Coachella was arrested Tuesday morning by the Riverside County District Attorney's Office. He is facing perjury and conflicts of interest charges and remains in custody on a hundred twenty, a hundred twelve thousand dollars bail and is scheduled to appear in court today.
Thank you.
I hope and pray Ukepa does not end up in the news in this way. Thank you.
Hanson Wong?
I think you're testing my metal and finding an hour that I can't survive. Getting close to it. Hanson Wong, District One, Ukepa. Just a couple of things I wanted to remind the city council of. As city council members, you represent your district on most issues, and on some issues, you represent the whole city, which all of you are striving to do. The more serious the events that happen or the things that affect the city, the more feedback I feel that the city council should get from your districts. And a couple of things, our city attorney has reminded us of many things when we're on a commission committee or on the city council, that we should do the things that are ethical, we should follow the letter of the law, which all of you and us strive for. And, but, he also mentions the fact, the perception of doing right and being ethical is also extremely important and should be followed as well. Transparency, the city manager position, there have been some talk, not necessarily in council, but by some council members, that the process should be as transparent as possible and that they would let the citizens of the city know what's occurring in the process of hiring the manager. Well, it started out with following some of this, but most recently, the hiring has been behind a veil, and it's difficult to look through the veil to see how the process is going, what you're striving for, what you're looking for, and how you're gonna hire. And so, I would stress again that you look out for your constituents, be as transparent as possible, and give the best perception possible that you are doing what is in the best interest of the city. Thank you.
Holly Warner? Followed by Melody Warner.
Holly Warner, District One, good morning, very early morning. Hope you've had your first cup of coffee. I do have some questions. First, I have some questions for city staff. I would like to know how much has been spent of public funds on the legal counsel and investigation related to alleged ten ninety violations of Councilman Miller? I would like to know when, if ever, this information will be made public. I think the citizens of Ukepa deserve to know how and where our tax dollars are being spent. I'd also like to know how many extra hours of work this new check review process will require of city staff. Also, how many extra hours of work will the new process demand from the remaining city council members? And is there any alternative staff can propose that would cost less time and hassle for both groups? Turning to Councilman Miller, I am interested in how you are funding your legal defense to the ten ninety allegations. Is the city of Ukepa providing any public funds for your legal counsel? Are you paying for your own legal defense wholly or partially? Has any individual agency provided funds or promised to compensate you in the future in some way for your legal defense? I'm also curious, have you received any financial contributions, gifts, or promises from people or agencies who have current or future financial interests in the city of Ukepa? I urge you to go on the record this morning with concrete answers to all these questions that will bear scrutiny. If you fail to do so, you're gonna further erode trust in our community. I hope you also answer this question, Mr. Miller, regarding discussion item number two. How can you possibly justify the continued expenses of time and resources of city staff and public funds? Can you please elaborate why your current course of action is in the city of Ukepa's best interests? Thank you.
Melody Warner?
Hello, my name is Melody, and I live in District One. Today, I'm here to discuss the warehouse development that you supported, Mr. Miller. As a representative, your job is to represent the opinion of those you are representing. However, my concern is that even after District One repeatedly voiced their protest against the warehouses, you still voted for them. On January fifteenth, during the meet and greet, you said that you wanted to repair trust, and not properly representing our opinions, you break even more trust. So I'm asking you, do you really want to repair trust? Because this would be a step in the wrong direction. Thank you for your time, and please take my concerns seriously in the future.
No more public comments.
If I could, I'd like to at least clarify the record. We did go out to RFP for consulting services for city manager recruitment. We received eleven responses back. All responses went to every single council member. The council members all reviewed and ranked, and then they interviewed three firms. City council unanimously chose the firm selected, just to clarify the record.
Thank you. City Attorney, on the item that's coming up on the... Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. I numerally don't comment on public comment, because there's normally agenda when public comment comes up, and it's normally the same people, and there's a reason they're commenting, and I understand that. That's just part of being in the city council seat, and there's a lot going on right now. But, Israel, make sure you get this right. I am funding my defense myself. I have no promises from anybody. I have nobody donating. I am doing it out of my personal account. So whatever allegations are out there about how I'm funding my lawyer, who is very good, that actually worked for the FPPC for many years as the chief division officer, of course, I'm gonna get the best defense I can, because I have done nothing wrong. There's a lot of allegations out there, and in this country, you're not proven guilty until you have a chance to clear yourself. I still believe in the democratic way, and I believe in due process. My fellow officers up here understand that. I'm sure they've dealt with complaints against them in their careers, that sometimes they have to be investigated, and you have to endure it until there's a final outcome. And there's intervening authorities that look at these things. The council can get opinions from attorneys all day. We've already submitted our seven-page opinion from my attorney and my team. I'm sure they're gonna get an opinion from Mr. Hertz, that's fine. He was the third party that was picked. I didn't have an opinion who to pick. I would have picked somebody totally neutral from the whole process. We've used Mr. Hertz before, but that's who the council wanted to go with, that's fine. I'm not in the meetings, I'm totally recused. You know, there's a lot of information out there that's missing from me. I haven't said anything. And even publicly, at first, I had commented, but I didn't, because, you know, I have an attorney, and it's, I gotta watch kind of what I'm saying, because I'm gonna have to deal with this. Because there's a lot of allegations out there. Put yourself in my shoes, right? If you had something levied against you, and you know you didn't do anything wrong, but politically, it's just continued to be attacked upon, you know that you didn't do anything wrong. If I had done something wrong, do you think I'd still be sitting here? Honestly, think about it. You know my career and my record. Why would I do it? Why would I, why would I still be sitting here? Of course not. And so, it's, let a third party look at it, look at it, let government agency, I don't care who wants to investigate it. Go ahead, I'll be open and transparent. I've done it my whole career, I have a record of being honest and open. If I've made some mistake, I'll own it, I always will, but I don't believe I have. The one thing that's been interesting in this whole thing is nobody's asked what my wife's job actually was here when she was recruited, and how hard she actually worked in trying to repair that program that was having problems and was damaged. She was seeked out because of her talents and expertise and education. And she's damaged through this to get to me, and that's just wrong. That's just wrong. My son's been damaged, Ryan. You know, people say I don't recuse myself. When he was up for a raise last spring, you saw me recuse and leave this room because he was up for it. And there were people up here at the podium totally against his talents and what he had done, and I left the room, because I recused myself. I know the rules. Today, we're gonna talk about a discussion item that's gonna have to do with a new committee. I understand, the council can do what they want, that's not a problem. But there's a system in place. The finance director explained it last, at the last meeting. The system is there. The committees are ministerial in nature. They have a system that other cities mirror and do that takes care of how warrants are done. Okay, they can do what they want. And I really haven't said a lot about this, because, you know, I'm trying to let the process work the way it's supposed to do. Knowing all that, and then I would face some public scrutiny, no matter what, people that may want to be in this chair one day, they have their own issues, I know that. To say that the District One didn't want me in this seat, well, there's five thousand voters in the district, and I was elected to the school board, no problem. And to say that, you know, there was a few people that got up in a meeting and sent a bunch of emails to the council, that doesn't represent the whole district. The emails and the support I have got over this from my district has been overwhelming. So, you know, if a few people come to my meeting, and they have the right to do that under the First Amendment, you can say what you want and feel what you want about me. But for the record, I'm not going anywhere. I'm not going anywhere until some authority tells me I can't. I'm not resigning. I understand that there's some feelings about that, but when you're right and you know you haven't done anything wrong, why should you resign? And let the truth come out. I have no problem with anybody investigating anything. I would not have a thirty-year career of doing things right and actually teaching this stuff, and then sit up here and act like nothing's wrong. The truth is, I believe I did the right thing in every, every part of my job here, and I have submitted my findings to the council for them to review. It's at least seven pages, I hope, I hope they'll consider it. They're all professional people, along with whatever findings they get. I can't be in that meeting to talk about it, and they can, you know, I'll let them deliberate on that. And hopefully, they'll come to a valid decision on how they want to proceed forward. No matter what I say, a few people are just not gonna listen, no matter what. That's just the way it is, that's just the way the business is. But I know in my heart, and I prayed on this quite a bit, that I did the right thing. And I'm not gonna be dissuaded from it. No matter who comes to the podium, how many people line up, sometimes you just gotta face it. And I'm willing to do that, no matter what. So, I appreciate any comments, but remember, my wife is a very well-known educator. She didn't need to be pulled into this. On October sixth, when the council had made a decision on something they wanted to announce, that night, they terminated my wife's contract, and she was right in the middle of helping that program, and that was devastating for her. And, you know, that's the unintended consequences. Nobody ever asked what she actually did in the program, and all the work she's done and put in, I saw it. So, I'll leave it at that, I know the mayor's probably wanting me to cut this short, didn't expect it. I wasn't gonna speak at all, John, but yeah, it just feel, you know, it's six thirty in the morning, and I have people here that feel strongly, and that's okay, it's the democratic process. But at some point, I have to say something. I'm not sure my attorney will like that, but, you know, I have to say something. And yes, I did hire a good attorney, because this is a serious issue that is in the paper every other day. Every headline is, even if I say something positive of trying to talk about, like last meeting, good job getting the signatures, this thing will go to a vote, what's one of the line in there? Israel writes, Bob Miller, who's under investigation for, does this. It doesn't matter what I say now, that's the cloud, okay? But, you know what? I'm gonna be vindicated, and I know I will, and that cloud will go away one day. I just gotta weather the storm. Thank you very much, Mayor, for letting me have that time. I do appreciate it, council, for you listening.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, item one is talking about the check registrant that's on the item. There's one item in there on page two, talks about maintenance at the police station. That's the only thing, and a quick review on there that I see is related to the sheriff's department. Do I need to recuse myself of that item?
Mayor, I'm not seeing that, that item that you're looking at.
On the invoice, page two, it's gonna be, the total's three thousand fifty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents, it's about midfield. Second one. Oh, so we actually have two. There's one for the sheriff's department for two thousand. I'll have to probably recuse myself from that one, but then there's another one talking about maintenance for the police station.
So I would ask staff, who the payment for maintenance is related to? I don't have that back up in front of me. I'm on the agenda that's on the city's website.
I don't think it's on the attachment on the website that I see, it's on that hard copy that was on my desk here this morning.
The invoice is for LifeScan vouchers. It's a payment made to the sheriff's department for a set of LifeScan vouchers.
Okay, if it's a payment to the sheriff's department, then I would just recommend you recuse yourself off of that. I think you just have...
So we got, we got two items on there then, that I'm gonna recuse myself. One for maintenance and one for the sheriffs, I think, is it the contract? What was that one on?
Mayor, I think we should just have a standing notation on staff reports, and in the minutes that you're accusing yourself of any payments to the sheriff's department.
Okay. So on that item, then I need to step out while you all review the check, and I'll have Mayor Pro Tem?
They can consider all of the payments other than the one to the sheriff's department, you can stay for that.
Okay.
And then if you want to step out for a second while they consider those two payments, that'd be appropriate.
Mr. City Attorney, point of inquiry, the police station is a city building, not a county building.
But if it's a payment to the sheriff's department, then the mayor should...
It doesn't say that, it says maintenance to a building, to a city building.
The one he's, I think specifically talking about is for LifeScan.
Sorry, Mayor, I don't have that document, I didn't get a printed copy of it, and I was informed by staff that it was a payment to the sheriff's department.
A hundred percent that one, that one I understand. I just, for clarification for future references, I was under the impression that city buildings, although maybe being occupied by a county sheriff's office, should be under the review of the entire council. Three thousand fifty, three thousand fifty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Venerer one-two-two-one-one, merchant, building maintenance.
So here's what I'm gonna recommend, Mayor. While staff gets to the bottom of that, having an abundance of caution, let's have you recuse off of it.
Okay, so there's two items on it, so I'll just recuse myself on the payment run on those two items. I don't, I don't think there's any other on there that I'm, but anything related to the police department or sheriff's department, I'll recuse myself from.
Sounds correct.
Okay. With that in mind, let's go ahead and call Phil White to the, for the presentation on the payment reports, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. Item one before you is the, an item for the payment reports. The recommendation is that the city council provide direction to staff on the timing of distribution of payments. So at a previous meeting, we were, we have a pause in our, in our normal process. We are pausing to have the full council review payments prior to distribution. And so, attachment one to, to, to the report is all of the pending payments since October thirteenth in the queue, waiting to be distributed upon the full city council's go-ahead. There are also, when we, when we talk about all payments, the warrant registers are not all payments. There's several, as I mentioned at the last meeting, there's several other types of payments. Those are listed in the agenda packet, in the bullet points, all of those things. If, if the direction is to pause all payments until the full council approves, these are all of the payments that would be paused. And so, the process for doing that is not on this warrant register. The pause in payments is other than, and so we would have to build the processes for those reviews in order to release those payments moving forward, pending direction of the council. So going through those one by one, the purchasing card, those are credit card payments. Really, the only way to pause, get approval prior to distribution on those would be to shut off the cards. We would need to discontinue the use of the P-cards, because we can't stop the payment. Once the card is swiped, the funds are swept out of our account, so we can't stop it. Our process that we would build would be to stop, stop P-cards. Petty cash, there is a way to get prior approval to petty cash, but that would be is we would have a form that was filled out by whoever was going to use petty cash. We would bring that to the council to get full approval, and then after the full approval, then we would distribute the petty cash. Debt service payments are by wire, that's the third bullet. There is a copy of an example of what that looks like in your packet. Those go through our wire controls. We can also do a prior approval on those. However, the timing of debt service payments is, is unique, and it's time-sensitive, and so we would need immediate responses and updates and approvals in order to not be late on debt service payments. Payroll, payroll is a big payment, also time-sensitive. There's a payroll register report in your packet. It's confidential information, a lot of redaction on that. But those, also timing, we run all of those reports. It's a moving target until the very end. Once we have a final, we hit the button, and, and payments are processed. And we can get preapproval on that, pending council's direction. We would need to build that process, and council should be aware that would also be extremely time-sensitive, so that those direct deposit payments went out timely. Same thing with PERS, those are ACH payments, the Public Employees Retirement System payments, swept from our account, or through ACH, rather. We can get preapproval on those. There's an example of those in your packet as well. And then the federal and state withholdings, also ACH payments and time-sensitive on those reviews. We can, we can build the processes to have an additional layer of review prior to the distribution of those payments. All of those are not normal operations, and we would need to build those processes. And the, the timing of those, all of these are obviously time-sensitive, and so, when we're, when we're building these processes, it should be understood that there's a timing element of whether, whether the committee is going to be on-site during the processing to say, okay, go ahead and make those payments, or we would need to build that as we, as we move along.
I just wanna add one more note, and I think it was explained at the meeting on Monday. The city spent over a million dollars for our new automated software called Tyler Munis. We did a presentation to you last year on all the three phases that it took. It took over three and a half years to do, and the council recognized at the time, before we even purchased the software, of the improvement of efficiencies and processes for the city of Ukepa. There are a ton of internal controls in the dot, in the software. We are, as staff, more than welcome to show you the processes of every step of the way. And it's up to you today on how you want to run either the warrant registers or all these other payment methods. But I just wanted to let you know that the system we have in place is to make the city of Ukepa more efficient, but it's up to you.
And Mayor, just from the legal side, you know, debt service is typically governed by covenants that we have with the lenders, the bondholders. Not meet, when the finance director refers to those as not flexible, I think he's understating it. Failure to make timely debt service payments have severe consequences to the city. That's credit rating, any future desire of the city to secure debt. Payroll is also somewhat challenging, because you get staff members who are putting in their time, putting in their vacation, putting in their overtime. Those come in, they get processed on a fairly tight timeframe, not making payroll on the date that is expected under our MOUs with our bargaining units. That could expose the city to liability. Same thing with PERS. I worked for an agency that went toe-to-toe with PERS once upon a time. I don't recommend it. I recommend making your payments to that agency on time, and then same thing with the state and federal withholdings. So, the, the direction that we got at the meeting on Monday was all payments. At a meeting with staff, well, does that include debt service? And I was like, well, you know, we wanna make sure that we clarify with the council. But I wanted to let you know, these things were specifically pulled out by your staff after consulting with legal. These are not types of payments that you've had issues with. They are governed by existing contracts, existing MOUs, and I do recommend that, although obviously you have the ability to pre-approve those payments, maybe consider taking these ones out of that general direction, that they be pre-approved and allow those to go out on the normal schedule. Perhaps get a report from staff on what that anticipated future schedule is. They should be able to tell you what the amounts are generally and when they will be paid out.
All right, thank you, sir. Do we have any public comment, ma'am?
No, we do not.
All right. We'll move up here for questions and discussion. I strongly agree that I think we need to keep everything in place as it is until we come to some sort of agreement on who our future, almost said city council member, what am I trying to say? City manager, there we go. I, I think that if we're gonna do anything different, we bring the register to the council, so it's for, you know, it's on our agenda, it's public-facing, and we can review it at that point. If there needs to be a change on that register, maybe we look at it. If there's something of importance, or something that, nothing that not all-important, but something that is needing review or of concern, that we do that early on, so that it doesn't impact payment. I don't think that it's wise to make all these major changes right now, one, without knowing what our future is with our city manager, two, affecting business for the city. We have a lot of issues that we're having to deal with, and we don't need to default on payment or cause problems to our employees and their payments, or... default on payment or cause problems, uh, to our employees and their payments, or whatever the, our legal obligations are attached to some of these things. Um, I, I think reviewing the warrant run would be appropriate, done openly, um, until we get that city manager in place, and then we can do a robust review of the finances and how we wanna do those at a later date, but I don't think we should be doing it now. Um, I, we just got too much, we're gonna hurt ourselves legally and functionality for the city. That's my, from my position here. To my right? Any comments?
Yeah, there's, nothing in, at least from my seat, um, was intended to, um, blur the lines between transparency and obstruction of city government. Please keep our city afloat, that's why we employ you, uh, experts in your field to do the job. Um, with that being said, we want us and the city to know what is happening. It was transparency we're seeking, not a modification of, of procedure, with the exception of the finance committee's oversight to what is happening. We wanna see what is happening and make that public, not amend the way, at least from my, this was my, my motion. I wanna amend the method by which we run our city, um, especially from the finance seat. But, as the mayor said, there's a, there certainly is, uh, an option for us to make, um, a more public-facing check run, so everybody's aware of what is being paid out. That way, um, should there be something that is concerning, it can be addressed and questioned in a public manner. So, I don't wanna confuse transparency and obstruction, that's not what my intention was, is to hamstring the city staff and then thereby flounder our city. But find a way to, ahead of the check run, in, in the, in the long-term, forecast payments that are gonna be going out, bring them to us beforehand so we can see it. The check run. Day-to-day operations still exist. If our, if our manager of public works happens upon an emergency, fix it. Swipe the card, that's why we give it to you. Make the purchases that are necessary to bring, restore order to our city. It was not my intention to handcuff you to the point where you're unable to do that. Um, we are a part-time city council. As discussed, we are damn near volunteers. We should not be being woken up in the middle of the night by people who are making over a quarter million dollars, asking if they can do something. That is what we give the city staff the ability to do, we just need to know about it and make it, "So, hey, look, this was, this is what happened. This is why we did what we did, this is why expenditures were made." On any, uh, any forecasted payments, bring them up before the council before it goes out. Hey, here's the next two weeks' worth of check runs. Absent any discussion or objection, we're gonna, we're gonna send these out on this date. Now, the, the discussion was had, "Well, hold on a second, that's not our usual process, and there is anticipated payments prior to your next meeting." Okay, that's why we discussed, I thought, I thought this was gonna be a, um, the, the forming of an ad hoc for a payments committee, is that coming up?
It's item number two.
Okay, perfect.
Based on direction of item number one.
Right, and that, that is, that is where I think the discussion is gonna be had, is to, "Hey, let's continue with the process that was in place prior to all of this with a payment committee ad hoc to review and approve until we can get a more permanent, um, transparent method by saying, 'Hey, over the next two weeks prior to your next city council meeting, we anticipate these checks going out.'" Cool, we can approve those. Emergencies happen, and there's, last-minute expenditures that need to take place, you are a highly-paid city staff, certainly not as high as some of the surrounding agencies, but certainly you're, you're funded enough to make decisions. Operate in the gray. Not everything is black and white. We do not, we cannot give you a roadmap that is going to clearly define everything you are going to experience in, in pending two weeks before our next city council meeting. We give you a general idea of how we want the city ran, based on input from our constituents, and you have to make the best decisions you have at your disposal. If something doesn't fall within the clearly-defined roadmap that we gave you, but it still needs to be addressed, make the decision. It may be scrutinized later, but the decision has to be made. I, I live in a world where I don't get the opportunity to be like, "Well, I'm not making a decision until somebody tells me what to do." Nope, make a decision. We have to fix the city, we have to continue down the road. We don't get to stand and, and be the deer in the headlights, 'cause when that happens, you get ran over. I refuse to be that city.
Yeah, Councilman, um, the, I think that the, um, the, uh, you, you make, you made several good points. Um, the, the look ahead, the, the forecasting, uh, at a previous meeting, you had, you had suggested, um, um, all entered into contracts. That would be the best forecasting, is to say, "These are all the contracts entered into." When you enter into a contract, typically what happens is, there's a forecasted payment coming up because services are going to be rendered. And so, I think that, um, uh, adding that, um, all contracts entered into over the prior month, or to we, every council meeting, or something like that, here's all the, the contracts entered into, that would be a great, um, uh, mechanism to create a forecasting to say, "Okay, these are the, there's ultimately gonna be a payment because we've entered into a contract with these." And that would be the first point of saying, "Hey, there's gonna be a future payment here." And so, I think that that, that's a, that's a great one. Uh, the forecasted payments, uh, once it gets to the payment side, to, um, uh, wrap that up and say, "Okay, these are the ones that we expect to issue in the next two weeks." That, um, uh, the, the, uh, payment process is cumbersome. It's, it's effective, but it's not quick. It, it moves, and typically we have check runs on Thursdays. Um, up until the morning of Thursday, we're reaching out to say, "Do you have all your payments in? Do you have all your payments in?" And so, uh, once payments get in and we, and we hit that check run Thursday afternoon, um, it's a moving target. And so, to, then to come to a committee or the council two weeks prior to that, um, the, the forecasting, we can say, "Okay, well, these are our monthlies, we know that this is, one's gonna come up and, and that." Um, but the, but the true, um, forecasting would, would be much better served by the, uh, the, the contracting, the contracts entered into. Um, so I think, I think we can couple both of those things. Historically, going back three years, we, we sent out an email and we, we just held payments until we got an email response saying, "Yep, approved," and then we would put them in envelopes and send them out. We can still do that. The effectiveness of that, of that control is, is limited, um, because, uh, when, when people get that, they're, they're, and so, so we can, we can do both of those things and, and get to a better spot than we are today.
I think there's a, you said it, I don't think we're looking for control as much as transparency.
Yep.
To see it, not control it. Obviously, you do have to do the job, just run the city. But we need to make sure we're shedding light on what is happening. So, it's not control I'm looking for necessarily, it's, it's oversight while you're doing your job.
Yep, and we added the warrant registers to the website starting fiscal year July. So, I think what we're asking for is the bullet points identified on Agenda Item Number 1, that you let us continue with our internal control. Agenda Item Number 2 is for you to select an ad hoc committee to review payments and contracts, which is a warrant register. That ad hoc committee would review those prior to us sending out the checks, which is different from what the resolution calls for, but on a temporary basis, that would let us do continuity of government.
Thank you, ma'am. Just reminding council, we have to be completely wrapped up with all of our items this morning by 7:30, so we can make it to our next portion. So, um, any other comments or questions on this briefly? Do you have anything?
You know, when you get your bills coming in and stuff, if, if, like, um, Mr. Beaver was saying, transparency and stuff, if we can see what's in the process of getting, you know, through the system to get paid, you know? I mean, it doesn't have to be, "Well, they didn't have all their paperwork and stuff, this is not gonna get paid," but if we seen it beforehand, it gives, you know, a little bit more insight of what, what's coming up. So, go ahead.
I'm fine.
But, I mean, we do the same thing at our shop and stuff, we see things coming up and stuff, I take it to the, the boss, this is gonna be going through, I don't know if we're gonna be paying all these, but at least he knows what's coming up. And, you know, whether it gets to the check run or not, at least we know what's coming.
Councilman Muller?
Just briefly, I, I, I don't think, I agree with the mayor, we shouldn't change the whole system because this issue came up. Um, I don't, of course, we should have transparency and stuff. I, I have no problem with that. Had we maybe done this on the front end, maybe things would be different, but I don't have a problem with this. If you, if this is the direction the council wants to go, um, it's always good to improve things. There's nothing ever matter with trying to improve a system if we see something we need to improve. Yes, I agree with that 100%. Um, but, you know, I, the system itself, when I listened to the presentation when I went home that night, uh, we have a good system. Munis system is checks and balance to make sure things are done correctly. There shouldn't be this over feeling that things weren't done right. Um, that's my only concern, the way this is kinda going, um, but extra checks and balances can't hurt, I'm for that. Um, that's all I have to say, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Woolsey?
I, uh, concur with, uh, Councilman Beaver's comments.
Thank you, ma'am. So, uh, then I guess I'd make a motion that we, uh, accept the recommendations, keep things in place as they are presented.
Hold on.
Excuse me, sorry. And, uh, accept the check registry warrant run as presented in here, with the exception that I have to abstain myself from anything on there related to the sheriff's department or police department, uh, maintenance stuff. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
First and a second, and those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
All abstain.
All right. I'll, I'll step out for the sheriff portion, so they can vote on that.